Buenos días a todos unidos al ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles, estamos preparando para el consejo. Nosotros hemos presentado las 10 con Juan Berx, Joel Anthony, Bercey, Han, Holden, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes y señor Juárez. Se encuentran en el edificio favorable de pasar a la sala tradicional reunión, gracias.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Estamos aquí el día de hoy para celebrar y reconocer el mes del niño. Y estoy parado junto a mi Carleen Davis, quien es la coordinadora de cuidados de niños de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Y como hablamos esta mañana, comenzamos el mes del niño con varios niños de la ciudad de Joy Picas. Hablamos sobre el hecho de que la ciudad de Los Ángeles fue uno de los primeros para tener una posición de guardería. Además de tener una guardería para los empleados de la ciudad y una póliza de guardería que fija el tono y fija prioridades para la ciudad de Los Ángeles para que hables sobre muchos asuntos sumamente importantes que los niños enfrentan. Hablamos este martes el tema del mes del niño es literacy y que todos deberíamos asegurarnos de abordar el asunto de literacy porque algunos de los números son estancantes sobre los individuos y los niños jóvenes que no pueden leer. Cuando hablamos de niños que aún no saben leer, esto es el factor más importante para determinar el éxito en la escuela y el progreso en la vida. El porcentaje de niños que pueden leer en las escuelas públicas no ha mejorado en los últimos 25 años. En realidad, el 70% de muchas escuelas pobres que están en lugares pobres no pueden leer. Esto es bastante extremo. Y yo particularmente me dedico a la biblioteca porque tendré muy pronto recursos para decirle a los niños y padres qué libros serían buenos para que aprendan. Pero es importante para que los lean desde pequeños. Estoy contenta de que el mes del niño sea celebrado para celebrar que ellos son su futuro. Esta mañana, el concejal Padilla, el jefe de la alcaldía Rocky Del Castillo y José Luisa y todas las actividades que tiene la señora aquí. La semana que viene, tendré varios eventos que voy a animar a todos a participar, a estar presentes y a animar a sus constituyentes a asistir a muchos de estos eventos. Así que estoy contenta de presentar esta declaración y reconocer a Carleen y a muchos otros personal de la ciudad. Para reconocer el mes del niño. Quiero presentar esta resolución a Carleen en nombre de toda la ciudad y el jefe de la alcaldía reconociendo que continuaremos nuestros esfuerzos para mejorar la vida de los niños de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Les doy un aplauso a Carleen, la comisión y para el mes del niño que se celebra ahora. No solamente los niños y familias de los ciudadanos, pero también el personal, los educadores, los profesores. No solo la fundación académica, pero también la fundación emocional para los niños. Gracias al consejo municipal por tomar el liderazgo de reconocer el mes del niño. También quiero que se dé cuenta que se ha hecho muy buen trabajo asociándose con el AUCD donde el premio empieza en Daxter. Estoy pidiendo a ustedes que sean mis socios y que me ayuden a continuar identificando y identificando nuevos clientes. Los niños que proveerán recursos para los niños más pequeños que tienen que experimentar. Así que ustedes van a oír más de lo que yo he dicho y espero trabajar con ustedes para hacer un ejemplo. Para los niños que quieran aprender, no solamente en Los Ángeles, sino en todo el país, muchas gracias.
Madam clerk, por favor, por favor.
Aprobado los minutos. Mister Garcia, Mister Pacheco, segundos. Resoluciones comendatorias aprobadas.
Mister Sikowski, Mister Burnson, segundos.
En la agenda regular, los temas 1 a 13 son temas para los cuales han tenido audiencias públicas. El tema número 4 es el reporte financiero del comité financiero sin recomendaciones, la CAO. Una moción es necesaria sobre el tema número 4.
Ok, miembros, temas 1 a 13, ahora antes de que las audiencias públicas se tengan en comité, una moción del floor será necesaria para abrir las audiencias públicas. Señores miembros que deseen llamar a audiencias públicas, temas 1 a 13. El tema número 1, llamado especial por el concejal Zay. Tengo una moción, el tema número 4, Mister Pacheco, los recomendaciones sobre el tema número 4, cualquier especial. Antes de votar, madame clerk, déjen el rol reflejar que la señora Han ha acompañado, muchas gracias. Si no hay especiales, los temas 1 a 13, con la excepción del tema número 1, madame clerk, por favor, abra el rol. Por favor, cierre el rol y tabule el voto.
11 votos.
Estos temas han sido aprobados. Siguiente tema, por favor.
Temas para las cuales no han tenido audiencias públicas, temas 14 a 22.
No tengo solicitudes de audiencia pública para el consejo sobre estos temas. La audiencia pública abrirá y cerrará los temas. Miembros que deseen llamar a audiencias públicas, temas 14 a 22. 14 a 22, ahora están pendientes. 19 llamadas especiales por el señor Pacheco. Any other specials? Temas 14 a 22. Mister Parks?
Quiero reconsiderar el tema 13 para especial.
Ok, vamos a ver como 14 a 22 primero. Sin ningún especial, madame clerk, por favor, abra el rol y tabule los temas. Cierre el rol y tabule el voto. 11 votos. Estos son aprobados. Miembros, tenemos una moción para reconsiderar el tema 13.
Una moción para reconsiderar el tema número 13. Abra el voto para reconsiderar el tema.
Cierre el rol y tabule el voto.
11 votos.
Tema 13 reconsiderado y llamado especial por el señor Parks. Madam, Mister Grul.
Podemos darle el tema 6 a la que se dedica, por favor.
Madam clerk, siguiente tema, por favor.
El tema número 23 en la página de continuación es también un tema para los cuales no ha tenido audiencia pública.
No tengo solicitudes de audiencia pública para el consejo sobre el tema 23. Satisface la audiencia pública. Miembros que deseen llamar al tema 23 especial. Members wishing to call item 23 special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special by Council member Zine, and there is an ordinance on the file.
Mr. Zine, item number one.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I just wanted to comment on item number one. There was an oversight, and language was admitted from the municipal code, and I want to compliment the Police Department City Attorney for bringing this forward, so we can put in the language that we need to reinstate the language regarding massage parlors, that they must obtain police permits, so they conduct their operations. Hopefully, we've done a lawful legal matter, and the oversight has been corrected, and they will all have to comply with the ordinance and comply with the permits granted by the police department.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine, and the members wishing to be heard on item number one. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That being an ordinance, carries over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special by Council member Parks.
Item 13, now before us, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to see if the C A O staff is here. I just had a question dealing with the reimbursement and in there, as far as the clarity of it, was the intent of the 62,000 per department to retrieve all of the $300,000 plus thousand dollar allocation, or just a portion of it?
Good morning, Scott, return to the office. The 62,500 is specifically for services related to those departments. The 355 from the general fund is not to be reimbursed. The 62,500 is for services related specifically.
62,500 per department?
Per department, yes.
Okay, now, what is, if it's not reimbursing the city's initial $350,000 allocation, what is that reimbursement for?
Well, the reimbursement is for the services for those departments.
Where we have this program in the proprietary departments or housing department, that those departments will reimburse the general fund for services provided, and the 355 is for services provided under the auspices of the council control departments.
Okay, maybe I'm confused. We're giving them 355 in order for them to get the program off the ground?
Yes.
Okay, then they're returning 62,500 per department as a reimbursement per year?
No, no, we're just saying that the $62,000 coming from the three proprietary departments in the, well, the three proprietary departments, D W A, Airport, and Harbor Department constitutes a reimbursement for services provided for their share.
Okay, so that the other department is not reimbursed?
No.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 13. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 19 was called special by Council member Pacheco, and a substitute motion has been distributed to the council members.
Mr. Pacheco? Just wanted to move the substitute motion, change the amount of the transfer of funds.
Okay, members, the substitute motion, item 19 has been distributed and moved. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the substitute. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Members, before proceeding to the next item, we do have tall members present at this time. Mr. Zine moves reconsideration of item number one, for purposes of taking a 12 member vote on the item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll and reiterate. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item one now back before us. Madam Clerk, once again, on item number one, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item one is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, Mr. Laban. You had an introduction.
Number 19, the President, we have some very distinguished guests from our sister city of Bordeaux, France, and I'd like to ask Janice on to join with me at this time.
We, we say hello. Philippe Chateau, several, several weeks ago, left his city of Bordeaux, France, on his motorcycle, traveled through southwest Europe, over into Africa, then not across the Great Atlantic, but flew his bicycle, his motorcycle was transported into Rio de Janeiro, and then has driven his motorcycle on part of a 60-day tour throughout the world in promotion of friendship, through South America, through Central America, through Mexico, arrived here in Los Angeles last night at 5:00 PM, where he was greeted on the steps of City Hall by myself, and also representing Councilmember Hahn, and a representative for the mayor, Naomi Rodriguez, the deputy chief of protocol, also welcomed. Because it's so special that we have a sister city program that is truly people to people and the friendship between our people of Bordeaux, France, and Los Angeles. And I thought it was appropriate to ask you to, before you left Los Angeles, to go north towards Canada, to come and be greeted by our city council and welcome to Los Angeles, and also ask for a few words from Janice Hahn, who most recently was in our sister city of Bordeaux last year, and Alan Halpern of our sister city executive committee for Bordeaux. But let me call on Ms. Hahn right now, and Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd like to join us, you can.
Thank you, Councilman Laban, and I am too, I'm happy to greet you and wish you well, as you continue your bicycle tour promoting motorcycle, promoting friendship, and goodwill among our people. And, you know, as we found out when we traveled through Bordeaux, France last year as a sister city delegation from Los Angeles, we believe more than ever, particularly in the times we're facing in our world, in our country, in our city, and certainly in our communities, that citizen diplomacy is more important than ever, and it actually plays a tremendous role in how we move forward as our, as our countries struggle with our relationships and our friendships. So we really do appreciate you, and we wish you well.
I'm Alan Halpern, the chairman of the Los Angeles Bordeaux Sister City Association. We're about to celebrate our 40th anniversary of our relationship with Bordeaux next year, and it's been a difficult time these last weeks to maintain a straight face, given the going on with our country and France at this time. And as Tom and Janice have both said, this is about people to people, and what's most important, I believe, is to recognize and separate the people of a particular country from their politics and their leadership, and recognize that we have many, many, many friends in France who love this country, and there are those of us here, myself included, who love France, and we hope to maintain that relationship through many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Philippe Chateau, if you would be present, and Naomi is here with us, for the mayor's office, we all have to sign him, because we just put him through the press. But we have the certificate of welcome, members of council, to both Bruce LaFol and Philippe Chateau, who's riding his motorcycle in 60 days around the world to bring friendship to all people. So on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, the little pueblo formed 221 years ago, we salute you and have a safe trip. Please extend the greetings of the people of Los Angeles to the people of Bordeaux, and also anywhere you meet in the world. Thank you.
I just say excuse us for the tie, but we are just a little legaged. And for the friendship between Bordeaux and Los Angeles, I less the, I mean, your friend, friend of Bordeaux, for me, because I speak just a little.
Very good. And last thing, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, could I ask you to sign and stamp officially, because he has from all over the world, his particular entry from our city, so Madam Clerk, if you would stamp this, I know Philippe Chateau would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Laban?
Thank you very much, everybody.
Mr. Laban? Yes? We can never thank the French enough for a wonderful gift they've given to this country that sounds off the shoreline of New York.
Statue of Liberty. God bless America, God bless the French, God bless everybody who wants to work for the good of all people. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you. Let's have a better hand now, you all, a bunch of...
No, people, too. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
There is a special one motion that is not on the agenda, presented by Councilmember Gruel, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll read into the record the findings for council to consider. On March 14th, council provided additional funding and extended the homeless shelter program through April 15th, 2003. The designations for five particular shelters were not, however, extended, and funding for such are scheduled to expire immediately. Pursuant to the government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substantive motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Mr. Holden, on the findings? If no members wish to be heard on the findings, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, special one is now before us, and you're in the midst of the motion first, Councilmember Gruel.
Before you, as an item, you may recall, a few weeks ago, we took an extraordinary step in extending our shelters for 30 more days. And as part of that action, we also need to expedite all applicable permits dealing with this issue and waive all fees and costs. We had increased, or, excuse me, had allowed us also to extend the leases in our last agreement. So this is a little bit of a cleanup motion for the item we took up two weeks ago, and because their contract ends today, that is the timeliness of this action we have before. So I'd ask for my vote.
Mr. Holden?
These additional A through E, or these additional shelters, the same as before? And how were they selected? Because some of the homeless people really don't hang out in those areas.
It's my understanding, Mr. Holden, that this was part of a competitive process that was done last year. The shelters opened, I believe, in November or December. So they've been operating since that period of time, and this is just, again, an extension, which we did a couple of weeks ago. This just allows us to waive the permit fees and so forth.
How much money were you talking about?
As far as I understand, no, the waiver of the fees, though, there are certain kind of fees associated with it. Do we have some of them in the CLA's?
Homeless, who's the county giving any money to provide shelters for the homeless? Who's paying for it?
Of this particular item, we allocated funds a couple of weeks ago.
How much do we owe?
If I recall, it was 400,000 or so. Yes, a little over 400,000.
400,000 dollars in additional time, and how much of that time is, like, until April 15?
Yeah, for a total of 30 days.
For 30 days? 400,000 dollars? How many people are you talking about?
How many people are they accommodating? We don't have anyone from the department here, I believe, because of rule 23. But the item before us talks about that we've had a, we had a capacity of over 110% at a lot of these shelters, and we found that with the upcoming winter, you know, extended inclement weather, that's why we extended it.
Maybe I missed that part. Can anybody here answer the questions, some of the ones that I asked, and some of the ones I'd like to hear?
I think Mr. Paul Smith from the CLA's office is going to answer the questions.
Thank you. You heard the question, sir.
Mr. President, Paul Smith from the CLA's office, two actions have previously occurred by the council on this matter. One, we took an action to declare an emergency shelter housing emergency, and to designate certain facilities as temporary. Then in a subsequent motion, we provided additional money and extended the time that these particular facilities could operate as temporary shelters. What we did not do on the second action, which has extended the money and the time, we didn't extend the declaration of the emergency and the designation of these facilities. So this is a cleanup motion relative to that.
So, given that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions on a home that says millions, when we first designated these shelters, end of last year, so when did we first designate?
This was designated in November 2002. It was for a period of time. It corresponds to our winter shelter program.
Is the county of Los Angeles making any contribution to this funding? I mean, the homeless and welfare and all that, those kind of programs within the jurisdiction of the county of Los Angeles? That being the case, what role are they playing at any in this regard?
The, this is a contract with L A S A. L A S A gets their money from both the city and from the county, so there's a county share to this.
So the county shares in this program? So therefore, we're putting up 40,000 dollars? For these shelters? How much is the county putting up? And what's the difference? I don't know. I think it's important to know, because, you know, some fat cats are contributing to the county. It's very important, because some of the poor, the disadvantaged, the people who are the poorest, the people who don't have homes, basically, these homes are for the indigenous, South Avalon, that's okay. South San Pedro, that's okay. 15th Street, that's a little bit away from the homeless. Certainly, 222 Northwest Morland. How did the homeless get over there? Those people, predominantly located, not in the San Pedro, you know, Los Angeles Street area. I mean, I just, I just wonder why we don't have them all down there. Any shelters down there, they collect their clothes, to open a shelter someplace, says, where the need is not as necessary?
Mr. President, I can't speak directly to the...
All right, that's all right. You did the best you could.
Ms. Gruel?
Just to respond to a couple of the comments that Mr. Holden made, Ms. Holden, we have asked the county similarly to provide additional funds, and to, to make sure that they're paying their fair shares. You may recall years ago, we sued the county of Los Angeles when I worked for the mayor, which helped us in the creation of the L A Home Service Authority and a shared responsibility here in Los Angeles. We have taken them to task recently on making sure that the county does have its fair share. I think what we can do is ask the department to report back when they look at next year's funding on those locations, to ensure that we're placing them in the areas in which the homeless are located.
Mr. Holden, for a second?
Ms. Perry, are you, can you hear? Ms. Perry, some of these, these three of them are in your district. Are you satisfied that all those shelters in your district are being funded, and some of his money's going to the other areas, and why is that not the case? If the need is greater in the area where the homeless people are, greater percentage of homeless people are located? Can you answer my question?
No, you're correct. The shelters are underfunded. I'm in the process now of trying to get the shelters funded year-round, so that there will be available beds for everyone who's living on the sidewalk right now. And for whatever reason, the ninth district has the greatest number of people living on the sidewalk. It's because the agencies, governmental, whatever, bring people and leave them in the Skid Row area on the street.
Well, I'm just saying, you have a sweep going on. Were you sweeping up the homeless?
No, we're not sweeping anybody. They're taking parole violators into the streets.
Well, the point is that, when you look on TV and see all these homeless being corralled in one area, and they haul off to jail. That's a sweep. And anybody that's definition relates to active law enforcement. So I'm saying, you've got a sweep going on down here, and you have a need for additional shelters. Why are all these shelters?
We needed, we had a need for additional funding for the shelters that are in the streets.
Whatever you think.
Some of them are in the nine council district now. I would be happy to take more.
You've got to ask.
Okay, well, I could do an amendment then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on special one, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Go forthwith, please. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. The court doesn't have a copy of it.
Okay, let's, let's take care of public comment before it comes to special two. Mr. Stephen Gar and Jim McQuiston, please come forward.
Pass them, por favor.
Go ahead. This is your time, sir. Go ahead. This is your time, sir.
What I'm requesting is... I went before Councilmember Zine a while back. And I provided documents here outlining certain improprieties when I worked for the Department of Building Safety years ago. And I'm requesting a letter reference since the state of Oregon requested in a certain format. That building and safety in the past has gone and to pass employers and respect employers and not said some bad things about me. But that to stop and to act in good faith. Like my job description, it took me a long time and one of the deputy general managers intervened. And finally, I got it, but the state of Oregon wants it notarized and I still can't get that. The reason being is, excuse me if I'm nervous. Near the end of my employment, one of my supervisors said something I found offensive. I told him what I thought. And he wasn't going to be my friend. His supervisor called me argumentative. She called me in the last day as you're argumentative. After five years and four promotions, there were no records as far as my training or my promotions. And I put back my training, which I kept. I was voted four times and the last evaluation, first thing, I can't fill out a route sheet correct. I've appealed to the Building and Safety Commission quite a while back. This thing keeps going on. The president asked for wide latitude from the city attorney to hear what I had to say. A few weeks later, he was terminated. Councilwoman Goldberg's office intervened. I got willing to rehire, but I still need for the state of Oregon this thing notarized and the job description notarized. What all I'm asking for is a letter reference from the Department of Building and Safety stating what I... The documents that I gave you, that's basically it.
Okay, well, thank you for being here, Mr. Zine. Maybe I wanted to say a few words for people on the side.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to direct my legislative deputy, Bruce Witten, to discuss this matter with you. We have received correspondence from you. I'm going to have Mr. Witten discuss this with you and hopefully come some results. Thank you for coming today.
Thanks very much. Jim?
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I want to make it clear to everyone and everyone listening that April 5th is a very important date in the convention center for everyone who lives, works, or owns property in Los Angeles. We're going to have a convention of neighborhoods. And there will be 37 different presentations covering practically everything that you want to know about Los Angeles. And we want to see everyone there. I know quite a few of the council persons will be there. You'll be able to talk to them. Also, department heads. But you'll probably find out a lot about the city that you really need to know. We have a new charter. And we need public input to make this city run right. The government wants your opinions. And to find out how to do that, you want to go to the convention center. April 5th, you'll get breakfast, you'll have lunch. And you'll really be amazed at the amount of material that you'll have in front of you. Get there at 8:30. You can register. You can eat your breakfast. And then the meetings will start. And you'll find out all you want to know about the city and how you can help us make it better.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next time, please.
There is a special two on the desk presented by Councilmember Garcetti. And findings will need to be made. Ten votes required.
Thank you. Do we need to determine the findings, Mr. City Attorney?
The city attorney is deferring to you.
This one's a close call. Okay, well, I think I was as shocked as everybody else to hear the radio this morning that Chief Braden had decided to take up the position as head of security for Celine Dion show in Las Vegas. For all of us that grows the city into disarray. And I feel like we need some real leadership at the helm. So I was wondering if we could call Mr. Holden to the table to speak on your possible qualifications as chief of police. Could you please hold the balance of my time, Mr. President? No, sir, please. Could you please share with the body, Mr. Holden, your police experience, beginning with military police? And going all the way through, say, this past week when you've been police here for this...
Well, let me just tell you that my training has been that... And you use no force necessary. When you pull your weapon, you shoot it. And, madam, madam, put information...
Your button, please, Mr. Lavange.
Okay, just on the findings, I think that this has come to us in a time of matter with the news. And I would ask my colleagues' support for taking this up.
Mr. Zine, on the findings?
No comment on the findings. I'm waiting for the real debate.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. On the motion itself, Mr. Zine.
What is this all about?
Mr. Zine? You have the floor, Mr. Zine.
I would request that we receive and file... Since the candidate is obviously not qualified.
Oh, qualified for what?
Other members on special... Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President? Before you speak, I'm going to be out of a job. So, Tevin, what do you have in mind? I understand that you have a long history of... I don't know if it's confrontation or simply contact with the police department, but is that true? Contact and relation and association in the manner which is positive for the good of the people of the city of Los Angeles. Yes, that's true. And have you written a book on these experiences? Mr. Pacheco, it's in progress. Because I saw some galleys on this book. I understand. Very interesting. Oh, yeah, it will be. It's an eye-opener and there's going to be information for you as well. And do you have a chance to vote on this for the next eight years?
Chair recognizes Councilmember Parks.
Nate Holden, I just have some questions for you. How much time do you spend in the military academy? Mr. Chief? All that was necessary, required by the training program in order to learn my job. And your use of force. If you draw your weapon and fire it... No, he says... Military or just your personal? No. The thing is that you use no more force than necessary. Be firm, be courteous, but you should always be very firm. Let the person know what you mean business. Well, they say, don't draw the weapon. You draw the weapon, you do it when you... Well, it's obvious you've never worked under consent decree. No, because we didn't draw it unless we... It was in defense of someone's life, protect life. It was for protecting your own. I think I'll just call for the question. Oh, that was my answer, too, wasn't it?
Mr. Zine?
Mr. Holden, what's the date today?
The day is your birthday. No, not my birthday. Well, I just want to fool you because it's April Fool's. Okay, okay. But you're not fooling me about what she... This examination of the position that's opening because you must understand I have no job. Mr. Lavange? Mr. President, excuse the debate. Please go to school at journalism, Hannibal School from USC. These fine students from the University of Southern California. And remind them to go back to the war of the worlds with Orson Welles. You know about that? When they had this announcement, a few of you do. And let people know out there that this is April 1st. So we're not fooling anybody this morning with this special order here. Right, I've got to tell you, this is over the weekend, when I watch television. And the problems I see that a young man faces throughout the world. I made a decision that next time I'm asked a question, what should I do when I leave office, June 30th? If they'll take me, I'm going to re-up. Mr. Ritter?
Before we vote on this, we need to ask you some questions, Mr. Holden. I mean, we've got some serious questions here. We need to know about your personal life, about these rumors of sexual predator, stuff like that. Any truth to that?
Truth to what? You're always my scout. And you're always upfront on every accusation that was made to me or about me. And you perceive it and clear the line, the minefield before I even got there.
If we're going to appoint you chief, we've got to know all the facts. It's one of those things. It's not like being on the council, you know, you hide everything. You've got to open up your life. I'm sure that Bernard has some questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
I'd be delighted. I'm an open book.
He's being nominated to replace the chief here. We need to know some information about him, don't you think so?
I'm an open book. This is, you know... We're not on television, are we?
Yeah, we're on television.
The great thing about the nomination is that they have several other deputy chiefs and assistant chiefs that will help them.
You think anybody can help? All right, Nate, I think you deserve it. I'm going to support it, okay?
We have a motion.
You really are joking. I have to abstain. I have to leave the room before the vote because it really affects me, they tell me.
People are afraid to leave the room.
Members, we have an ethics commission report recommending approval. But a motion for Mr. Zine to receive and file, Mr. Holden? Without objection, Mr. Holden, you're receiving files.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we note and file, not receive. Receiving and filing means we kill it. We want to keep it open because we want to keep him on the hot seat over there.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, for being a good sport.
That's a solid message. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Tuesday, April 29th for city business that meets council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Tuesday, April 22nd for city business that also meets council policy.
Excuse granted.
And that clears the desk.
Members, are there any announcements today? Any announcements today? Do we have adjourned motions? Please try. Members, I do have one announcement for residents of the San Fernando Valley or anybody who finds themselves in the San Fernando Valley this evening. I think culminating a week's long series of events celebrating the life and legacy of Cecilia Chavez, the Cecilia Chavez Memorial Committee in the San Fernando Valley is hosting a seven o'clock mass at Santa Rosa Church. I think this will be the last activity for this week for this year. Santa Rosa Church, 7 p.m. Are there announcements adjourned tributes? Mr. Lavange?
Members, I'd like to ask you to adjourn a memory of Michael Jeter. Somebody we delighted children for many years on Sesame Street is Mr. Noodle. And the Tony Award for the Broadway musical Grand Hotel. And Emmy for his role as the assistant coach for Mert Reynolds Television City. Excuse me, Evening Shade. He was found dead Sunday in his home. He was 50 years old. His parents, Dr. William and Virginia Jeter, his life partner, Sean Blue, a brother and four sisters of his family. We asked him to adjourn in memory of Michael Jeter, passed away tragically at the early age of 50.
Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, colleagues, we request we adjourn in memory of Kenneth PeYoung. Mr. Young passed away March 22nd. Kenneth PeYoung was born on May 16th, 1950, in Glendale, California. Was a longtime resident of Tarzana. Labor attorney at UCLA. Loving husband and father. Who will be greatly missed by all of his family and friends. He is survived by his wife, Benita, and two children, Lindsay and Lisa. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Ritter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't believe we adjourned in memory of Daniel Patrick Moynihan, one of the great statesmen of this country who passed away last week. He was a senator from New York for 24 years. An intellectual giant who tackled international and domestic issues alike. He wrote over 18 books, was a professor and a senator, worked under four presidents, Kennedy, Johnson, Ford, and Nixon. And was somebody who really brought the power of ideas to public policy, whether it was around welfare policy, social security. He was a real giant, somebody who was an ambassador to the UN, ambassador to India. He served his country tremendously. And the whole country has lost a giant in his passing. He survived by his wife Elizabeth, his three children, and their two grandchildren.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.